Good evening, everyone. Can we all stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with whose vote we're liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call for attendance, federal?
Mr. Gomez Pereira. Ms. Alfaro. Ms. Fernandez.
Present.
Mr. Oregan.
Present.
Ms. Colas Caraballo.
Present.
Ms. Balderas.
Present.
Dr. Neville.
Present.
Ms. Enriquez.
Present.
Ms. Cabral.
Present.
That's eight members present, one absent.
Can I have a motion to approve the meetings, the minutes from last month's meetings on March 28th, 2024?
Motion. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the presentation. I'll pass this over to Dr. Albeda.
So for our first presentation tonight, we have an update on Chelsea Opportunity Academy and the Intergenerational Literacy Program. And what we would like to do is just give you a brief overview of where we are in the process of securing a new home for Chelsea Opportunity Academy and ILP. Again, we are still in the process, but we do want to provide an update. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Lamboy.
Hoping that all the technology works well. Yes. Good evening. I'm Monica Lamboy, Executive Director of Administration and Finance. Thank you. We just want to give you a quick overview of the space that we have been looking for for the COA and ILP. First, in terms of what is the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, as everyone here knows, but perhaps people on the television don't know, it's Chelsea's first new alternative school in recent years. It opened in the fall of 2018 with 50 students. It's focused on students who would otherwise possibly drop out of high school. These could be students that are working part-time or full-time, they may be parenting, or they may just be struggling in attending a traditional high school. The COA offers a flexible schedule and a competency-based curriculum that really is designed to meet the unique needs of this population. Right now, we have 150 students enrolled in the school, which is a great growth trajectory for the school. They physically occupy six classrooms in Chelsea High School, and they could theoretically expand to 175 if we were able to find space and capacity to do that. What is the Intergenerational Literacy Program? They provide classes in English as a second language. They also offer early high school equivalency, diplomas, HICET, or the GED diploma. They opened in 1989 under BU, and they offer classes, in addition to classes for adults, they also have classes for children, and they have childcare and classes for children so that when the parents are coming, they're able to drop their children off so that they can study and know the kids are getting taken care of. They currently occupy three classrooms at the Early Learning Center during the day and in the evening, when they expand, they're in the hallways, they're in the teacher's cafeteria, they're trying to offer classes wherever they might be able to, because as you can see on the slide, we have a waitlist right now of 757 people that are seeking to take classes at the Intergenerational Literacy Program, but we literally don't have capacity. I asked the director, how long would it take the most recent person added to that waitlist to get into a class, and she's estimating two years before they would be able to get into a class. At the same time, our Early Learning Center has a waitlist of 181 pre-K children that we cannot offer seats to in the building because those three classrooms are taken up by the ILP. So what are the benefits of co-locating these programs? We could expand the enrollment at the COA, we could open up the childcare slots that we already have to the students of COA who are parents in order to give them childcare on-premise of their high school. We would be able to offer them a unique space that would be outside of the building of the high school, which as we know is a very, very busy space right now, and it would allow Chelsea High School to have those six classes back, which would allow them to expand their course offerings, because literally every room in the building is occupied every period with except for one classroom, is what the principal told me. So we would be able to offer more classes at the high school. We'd be able to increase capacity of the ILP in the evening if they had more spaces for the adults to go into, wraparound services, because some of these students are deciding, do I want to go to an alternative high school, or maybe do I want to seek my GED? Here, if we brought those professionals together, they could work with those students to figure out the right pathway for them. We'd also be able to add more pre-kindergartners at the ELC. Three classrooms would give us about 120 seats for a half-day pre-K if we were able to open up those three rooms. We'd reduce barriers to attendance for the students and reduce food insecurity, because we have free breakfasts and free meals for our students that are on-premises. And we would increase the number of high school graduates. So what have we been doing? We did a space needs study in February of 2019 at this point. On the slide, this is the general configuration of what we believe would be needed, eight classrooms for the COA, bathrooms, administrative space, approximately 11,000 square feet, and for the ILP, three adult classrooms, a pre-K, childcare classroom, administrative space, et cetera. With efficiencies, so if they are in the same space, we only have to have one copy room, we may only have to have one reception area. So there are efficiencies that would be made as opposed to looking for two separate locations. In terms of the process, we started in the fall of 2018 when I started here, first looking at city-owned property, if there was anything that the city already had in its inventory and was unsuccessful in that. We have since sent out four separate iterations of requests for proposals, receiving anywhere from zero, we did receive one response at one point, we did receive one response was our Webster Avenue site, which was too small for what we're talking about here, but perfect for what we were doing administratively, so we did use that opportunity. And then the exciting news is this February, we did receive two proposals. So at that point, because there's two competitive proposals, we have to take them through the same process to make sure that we are fairly looking at both of them. One was a lease option for 15,000 square feet on two floors in a commercial building. They only offered us 10 years. If you notice, we've been six years in trying to get to this point, so a 10-year lease is a bit of a concern. And then another was a purchase option for a 16,000-square-foot space in a former church building. So what we've done, we had our architects, engineers, and our environmental consultants go through both sites, site visits by the evaluation team, financial review, we looked at an array of criteria, and we put together a comprehensive committee to review this, the COA, ILP, two cabinet members, buildings and grounds, and the city's DPW department. And so, at this point, with the two properties, our next step is to make a formal recommendation to the city manager, and then the city manager will be working with the city council, because acquisition of property, which is one of the options, requires a vote of the city council if we're going to do that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say thanks for this presentation, because I learned a lot of new things, like about the benefits of having both of these in the same space, and I learned more about the COA situation. I knew more about the ELC, because that's where my son goes, but this is a really useful presentation, and I look forward to the next steps.
Thank you, Monica.
And I also want to say thank you. I do appreciate having both options displayed. I think I have been pretty clear as far as my stance on my obvious preference. I, you know, I think, in my opinion, based on the recommendations, I do feel I have a very obvious preference of one versus the other. If we're going to be taking any hints from bigger institutions, I think it would be my, I think it'd be, you know, a great attribution to have, you know, given the circumstances, how long it's taken us to find a place, and just for the security purposes, to potentially secure something like that for the long term, it would give us ease of mind and financially down the road potentially be a lot more cost-effective, so that's just my take on it. So thank you so much for the presentation, thank you for all the hard work that everyone's put into it, so.
I have a question. If you can agree to the presentation, I'm just wondering. Amplifying, okay, it is now. But I'm just wondering, when throughout this process, would school committee be able to sort of like visit the site? I don't know if that's been scheduled slash, I don't know if you'd be the person to answer this? Maybe all me might have some insight?
Yeah. So we're still working with our city manager and on the process, so once we know a little bit more, we're more than, we'll schedule, we can schedule visits.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
And I have another question, but she has one first. You go first. I'll go back.
So supposed to, who is the one who decides which one we're going to choose when they come to that point?
That would, that is actually going to be a city decision, because if it's a purchase, then it would go to city council. So it depends on, we're still looking, we're still weighing everything, and we have a strong recommendation on the table, but there's still, we're still in that process right now, so.
Thank you.
Hey, team, I miss you all very much. It is so wonderful to hear that this is finally happening. Our students deserve a space to call home, and so I commit to being a listening ear and partnering with you all and making sure that we make the right decision for our students and for the team, and so you can count on my support whichever way, so thank you.
And I just want to thank you again for this presentation, and really excited about what this can mean for our future graduates and increase enrollment, too. And you noted that the space study was conducted in 2019, and since then, COA has grown as a school, which is amazing, shout out to COA. And I'm curious how we're taking that into consideration as we're choosing a space and/or for future expansion.
The space needs study did anticipate the, reaching the 175, so you'll notice there's probably, there's more rooms in the space needs study than we actually are operating under, so there will be some growth capacity. And then depending on the property that's actually selected and how well it can lay out, we can try to squeeze out, you know, some other opportunities there, too. Until we have a firm site, we're still working with the, you know, general needs that we had identified a while ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamboy, for everything, for all your hard work and the you've put into this, it's very appreciated. And thank you to the city council and the city manager for working with us on this, and hopefully we'll have a new home soon. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Monica, for the presentation. I wasn't, I didn't hear clear where it's going to be those properties that you mentioned about the two proposals.
Yeah, and we're not able to disclose at this point, but we can add a later date.
Okay. Thank you so much for that, and we're looking forward to work in collaboration also with the city council, that they are the ones that are going to make the hard decision or the proper decision for, to choose what is proper for our students, so thank you.
Okay, and we do have another presentation. For those of you who may not realize this, we do have several early college pathways, and one of our early college pathways is to education, and we really want to grow our early college pathway to education, to grow future teachers, especially teachers who are diverse and teachers who come from Chelsea, so we can hire teachers from Chelsea, students from Chelsea, too. So I'm going to actually turn it over to Ms. Lee.
Good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Albeda mentioned, the early college program has been something we've been really excited about, and so part of that, we've joined forces with the Teacher Pathway Program, and many of you know that that is our internal pathway program to help diversify workforce and help build up the amazing talent that we have in Chelsea Public Schools. And so currently, we have five arms of the program. We have high school to para, parent to para, para to teacher, emerging teacher, and teacher to administrator. And so we have successfully established people in each pathway. Currently, we have 44 folks in our internal pathway, and we're approaching almost 100 total staff who've gone through the program, so are really proud of the work we've done together. And so today, I'm really excited because we have our first student in our high school to para program. We've had some, it's been a journey to get the word out, get kids interested, and so I'm really excited to hand it off to Jasmine in a second. But just to give you a little update for our high school students, we have currently five acceptances, and so today Jasmine will be representing our award recipient, our program participants. We have worked with our counselors at CHS, and we are excited to continue to develop that pathway, especially as we increase interest in the early college pathway at the high school. And so I'm really excited to introduce you to our first participant in the TPP program, Jasmine Mendoza, and she's going to be sharing a little bit about why she's going to be part of the TPP, and she's already in the early college pathway, and so I'll hand it over to Jasmine.
My name is Jasmine Mendoza, and I'm a junior at Chelsea High School. I've lived in Chelsea my entire life. I'm interested in participating in the Teacher Pathway Program, because I'm excited to work with students in the FKO after-school program as a paraprofessional. The reason I'm interested in doing this amazing FKO program is to help students go through the same things I went through as a student in Chelsea. When I was in kindergarten, my teacher, Ms. Teraz, was always so patient with me when I was struggling learning English. I always got frustrated, because no matter how hard I tried, I kept making mistakes. But she always reminded me that everyone works at their own pace. I have kept her words with me since till this day, because they really helped me with my learning, especially learning English. My elementary school was the Kelly School, but what made my experience different from other students was learning English. Throughout first grade, I always struggled with reading and writing English. I always asked my teachers for help learning how to pronounce words. I felt so behind and lost, because no matter how hard I tried, I always felt that I would just stay behind from everyone else, all because I couldn't speak English. Spanish was my first language, it's a part of how I speak in my daily life, too. It was a struggle keeping up with both, because I didn't want to lose my Spanish. What was great was that the Kelly School created a Caminos program for students to learn both English and Spanish, which I feel is important and should be in every school. The language students speak is how they're able to more comfortably express themselves. I believe that it is important to create a safe space for a child, not just for education, but also to help them not hold themselves back as a person. And to be who they truly are to themselves is very important. This amazing opportunity with FKO will help me show those kids who are going through what I did, that they are smart enough and good enough, just like everyone else. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm very excited to begin my work with the Teacher Pathway Program and becoming a paraprofessional.
So if the superintendent wants to come present, Jasmine, a word for being our first participant in our TPP program. I will give you that.
I'm going to get a sugar rush.
I ain't won, I controlled myself. Look at me, I controlled myself, I ain't won. I'm stare.
Sarah, if you'd like to sign.
Well, that was wonderful. Such a joy to see our students go from kindergarten to high school and just share the, so much, so much rich reasons of why we have dual language and rich richness about the dedication of our teachers in Chelsea. We are really trying to grow our teacher education, our teacher workforce. We really want to grow this program that we have at the high school, congratulations, and really share with our students how education is a wonderful profession to go into. So just, we're just very excited about this program and growing it some more. So with that, I do have Mr. Delaty with your indicators of success.
So some good news this month on indicators of success. The first thing I'll share is the monthly attendance. As you compare month to month from February to March, as you can see, some mixed colors here in the month category, but the highlight this month is that all four high school grades, nine, 10, 11, and 12, have increased over the previous month, and we have, all but two grades have gone down in the lower grades. Grade two went up and grade six went up. But the good news here is that when you compare year to date, we are on pace to beat last year's attendance rates in every grade but grade six and grade nine. And if you look at grade six, it only went, it's only on pace to be one-tenth of a percentage point below where we were last year. Every other grade is on pace to beat last year. So good news there. In terms of the dropouts, we are currently looking at a 5.35% total for, at this point during the year, as compared to last year, which was 4.48, but when you disaggregate the population groups, the students who are not identified as multilingual learners or students with disabilities are at a 2.98% dropout rate as compared to a 3.78% rate from last year. So that's why that is green, it went from 3.78 to 2.98. And our multilingual learners, last year at this point, were 13.17%. The year before was 16%, so we have two years of drop so far. This year, it's down to 10. While it's a higher number than we like, we're still happy that it's going in the right direction. For the month of March, we've only had four students withdraw. We were able to get two of them into an adult ed program, and the other two are location unknown. And lastly, we have our in-out data. The trend all year has been more in than out. I will draw your attention to the bottom right over here, and I feel that this is an opportunity for me to kind of emphasize the work that our people at the Parent Information Center have been doing. At this point during the year, we've had 358 students leave Chelsea, but we've had 658 students newly enrolled in Chelsea Public Schools. So that means 658 intakes at the Parent Information Center over the course of the year. As most of you know, I'm leaving the district at the end of June, and the district that I'm going to averages about two to three newly registered students per month, so we have 658. So just, I want to take this opportunity to call out the hard work that Danny Mojica and his team at PIC have been doing.[1672.83][1672.83](applause). And with that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions from the committee?
Thank you very much.
So I'll turn it over to our amazing student reps.
Good evening, members of the school committee. We're excited to share some updates with you tonight. It has been an eventful past couple of months. Starting off, the Chelsea High School Drama Club had its very own production of the Addams Family School Edition, three nights of spectacular performances put on by our very own students at CHS, so major props to them. Moving on to exams, so in preparation for AP exam season, AP classes from science, English, history, the arts, took mock exams that took place on different days over two weeks to ensure our students could get better prepared and be able to succeed in these crucial tests that could help them in the future. In addition, last month, 10th graders took the English M-Test from March 26th to March 27th. Now, this is like a special, I don't know how to say that, a special update. I had the great privilege of being able to travel with a team from CHS comprised of students, faculty, administration, along with Mr. Hauschen over there, who led us through this amazing experience. Together, we visited Manchester High School in Connecticut to gather data on their practices for inspiration, a part of the Dream Phase funded by the Bar Foundation for School Redesign. We each observed classes, participated in workshops, and connected with other staff and students from other schools. Chelsea High School aims to implement practices like senior stories that showcase growth by having students create profiles from, that by having students create profiles that they carry with from ninth grade to senior year to then be able to present these projects in their senior year. And this experience emphasized the value of diverse perspectives and collaboration along with exciting things to implement for student success.
Yeah, so now we just want to move on to a senior update. So the Class of 24 will have their prom on May 18th, and this is just a very exciting time because it's the first time we're going to have a new venue that accommodates more space for students, and we're welcoming donations for students to be able to attend prom, which are priced at $70 per senior. If you're interested in donating, you can reach out to Ms. Gilbert at GilbertA@ChelseaHigh, not Chelsea High School, ChelseaSchools.com.
Moving on to survey updates. Over the past couple of months, we've been working to collect student feedback. And looking over the data, we're discovering the nuances in our data that requires to explore the data further and provide an accurate representation of our student feedback. While doing so, we're communicating this information with our school administration and central office to fully understand our data and correlations. We want to thank Assistant Principal Ms. Knight and Dr. Jennings and any other staff that has helped us along the way. And, sorry. And, I'm going a little too fast, I need to slow down. In our next meeting, we will have a visual display with our full data breakdown.
Yeah, even though this is the case, we still want to give you guys some updates around our survey and highlight some of our overall findings. So the survey received about 437 responses from students at Chelsea High School out of about 1,600 students. So we spent a lot of time going to speaking to students in lunches. We presented at house assemblies, which had about 200 students in each assembly. We even went into classrooms to present our survey and just try to gather so much feedback. We had it open for about three weeks. So when surveying students, we asked them to choose two things that contributed to their success at Chelsea High School, which 45.4% of students who took the survey stated that clubs and activities contributed to their success at CHS. 35.5% stated a sense of belonging. 17.8% stated in post-secondary success opportunities. And 1.2 other students stated other reasons. In this category, students said that clubs and activities and the sense of belonging at Chelsea High School contributed to their success. When surveying students again, we asked them to choose two things that they thought could be a focus that CHS can improve upon. 39.9% of students who took the survey stated bathrooms and safety was a primary concern. 31.9% stated attendance-related issues. 13.2% stated in-school support. 11.4% stated post-secondary success. And 3.6% stated other reasons. In this category, the top two concerns for students was the need of improvement in bathrooms and safety and attendance-related issues. Although these conversations may be tough sometimes, they're important to have. I particularly enjoyed speaking to students at lunch and having these meaningful conversations. I learned in order to capture the full high school experience, you need to speak to various students and push just beyond my circle. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out, and we're excited to share our findings next meeting.
Thank you. That was very nice. Our next report is the personnel update. And with that, we've only hired 100, well, not only on this one, we've hired 100% Hispanic employees this month. And then resignations, retirements, and terminations, you can see. And then as far as the enrollment report, our enrollment has increased. We are now at 6,315 students. So I would like to commend this report to, both reports to the record. And I'll turn it over to our chair now.
Thank you so much. Next is the committee reports. The subcommittee minute reports, which are enclosure Ds. We'd like to commend these to the final report. Can I get a motion?
Second.
We'll move on to new business. Consideration in action to accept an increase in the sum of $16,505 for federal entitlement grants for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative, one absent.
In affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept a gift of $1,000 from the Zonta Club towards the girls' On the Run Extended Day Program. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative, one absent.
In affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept a gift of 30 bags of ice melt from Restream with an estimate value of $900. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative, one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept a gift of 50 cubic feet of raised bed soil mix with a value of $114.95 from the Coast of Maine's Growing Good Program. Roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept a gift of free wood chips from chipdrop.com. Roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative? Eight in affirmative, one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept a gift of six National Geographic magazines dating from 1970 to 2019 from Mr. Danny Marcus with an estimated value of $130. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to $1,815,000 to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments in multiple schools to Kelly Elementary School, other instructional programs, district administration, special education, and pupil personnel services, and facilities and transportation fiscal year 2023 to 2024. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Next, school committee member Dr. Neville moves to accept the resolution in support of the Massachusetts State Government Adjustment of Chapter 78 for inflation, inflation for the fiscal year 2025 and beyond. At this point, do you want to read them?
Do you want me to read it, or do you want me just to explain it in my own words? Or do I have to do one or the other?
You can, you can do either one, whichever one you choose.
Okay. So we passed around a resolution that we were asking you to sign, and I think all of you here also signed the petition that I am working on as well. But basically, what has happened this year is because our SRF funds are ending, we're really feeling kind of the effect of something which is called the Inflation Adjustment Cap. So in the Student Opportunity Act, they put in a, like a regulation that if the actual inflation goes above 4.5%, that the state government is not going to give us more than a 4.5% inflation adjustment. So what this means is that even though over the past two years, inflation was like 7%, 8%, and all of the costs for the district were going up by 7% and 8%. Transportation, insurance, school supplies, books, everything was increasing in price, and there was all this inflation. But the state only gave a four-point, only adjusted the aid that they gave to us from the state level by 4.5%. So this is a policy problem that's really affecting districts all across the state. So what we're asking is for the legislature to do something one way or the other about this. There's a couple different options on the table. One thing is that they could give us, oh, so in actual inflation this year was only 1.3%. So the governor's budget has offered a 1.3% inflation adjustment. But what about the inflation adjustments we missed out on in the previous two years? So one option is like they could give us the whole, like, 7.3% adjustment all at once this year, which would probably require changing the law. Or they could just give us a 4.5% adjustment this year, and then next year give us another 4.5 and like help us catch up. But basically, without making, changing something, the state is kind of going back on their, the promises that they made to school districts in the Student Opportunity Act, where they said, you know, we're going to meet your needs according to this formula. But they're, they're not meeting our needs financially because they're kind of shortchanging us when it comes to inflation. So that's what this resolution is about.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. School committee member Dr. Neville moves to accept the resolution in support of the Massachusetts Legislature passing the Cherish Act. I'll pass this on to Ms. Dr. Neville again so she can explain.
So the Cherish Act is a bill that's in the legislature right now. And basically, the point of the bill is higher education for all. Back in the 80s, public higher education, public colleges and universities, whether it's UMass, you know, Bridgewater State, Salem State, they used to get a lot more funding from the government. And now that funding has been cut and cut and cut over time. And instead, these schools have to rely on tuition in order to get their, their needs met. So one of the most important things that this bill would do is it would actually give grants, student, financial aid to students. So students would be able to graduate from state colleges and universities debt-free. That's like the most important thing that this bill would do. And I think it's just so important for Chelsea students because there are so many students here in our schools who don't pursue higher education because of the cost. And it's not because they can't get it, and it's not because they can't handle the paperwork, it's because they're afraid of graduating with debt. And so I think that this is a really, really important bill for, for our students and for educational equity in general. And that's why I wanted to pass a resolution encouraging the state government to pass it.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Let's see, in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to approve the proposed amendment for the Chelsea Virtual Academy's Single District Virtual Schools Implementation Plan. Roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
I actually have a question before, if we could just have a little bit more clarity on this. So is this something that we have to vote on a yearly basis, or do we revisit it on a yearly basis?
Yeah.
Or is it on a periodic time?
So DESI requires that school committee does vote to keep a virtual, a single district virtual school. There was, the amendment that was made was grade seven through 12.
Okay. And I saw that as well as changing the student number down from 300 to 100.
Yeah.
Okay.
In our original application, this was, remember, we started the school like right
In 2021, I believe, yeah.
During the pandemic. So we had opened, when we originally applied, it was K through, it was actually K through 12. And then we had left, we applied for the max amount so that, to leave it open. And now that we're, we're up to reply again, we, we were making an adjustment based on what the students were receiving and, and actually what, who we're serving. So that's why the amendments were made. And the enrollment, we're, we're lowering the cap on the enrollment. Because we really do want to make sure that we're encouraging students to be in person. But there are case-by-case basis, you know, it's, there's a, we have a portfolio, so.
My question is, so with the language as the information that we, that we saw, I think by doing the seven through 12, I think in the original format, it said, you know, case-by-case basis, I did not see that kind of, I didn't see that in the new proposal.
It's still the same. It's, yeah. So every, every student that gets accepted into CVLA is, it's, the parents have to ask, and then the, the applications are reviewed.
All right. Perfect. So then in that case, yes.
Ms. Balderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Thank you.
Yes.
Let's see, in affirmative and one absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make? Dr. Neville?
Hi. I'd just like to ask everyone to save the date for the Chelsea Research Festival is on Thursday, May 9th, which is before our next meeting. So I wanted to make sure I mention it. And it's at 12:30, 12:30 to 3:30 in the Chelsea High School Gymnasium. So currently, we're scheduled to have about, about 10 different groups of students across Chelsea High School and middle schools presenting research that they have conducted, along with about 15 different teams of researchers from universities, BU, Harvard, MGH Hospitals, presenting their research, as well as other community members and nonprofits. And I would just love to, to see you all there.
What was the time again?
Hmm?
What was the time?
The time is 12:30 to 3:30.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else? Any other announcements?
I have two. I just, our comments, I wanted to say that our Addams Family production was amazing at Chelsea High School. Bo, all three, all three shows were packed, and it was delightful. And I continued to hear amazing comments. So just a, a major shout out to the students who were involved, from setting up the crew to the costumes, to those that were performing. And then of course, Eliana, who does an amazing job at production. And it was wonderful. And then we had an all-district concert last night. Thank you for those of you that went. All grade levels, K through 12, at the Williams Complex. And Monica, the parking was great, it was fine. And the music was fantastic. So just a shout out to the, all the music, the music department and the teachers in the music department. Our kids are, they had amazing, they did an amazing job with the performances and the song selections were, were engaging. So I, I really enjoyed last night.
Yes.
I just want to highlight the Eclipse viewing party. The ELC staff worked very, very hard. The kids, my kids came home with Eclipse certifications. And I, they, they came home with all sorts of YouTube songs and planetary info of demotions and promotions and all sorts of, so, I mean, they, they really went out of their way to engage the, the students. And of course, like, all of the six parties were amazing. They did complain because there was a certain DJ that was missing. So, I mean, those kids really know how to party. But yeah, yeah, the DJ was missing, so. Yeah. They, they was like, is the DJ somewhere else? But, um, yeah. So it was, it was great. And I believe our city manager is going to be running the marathon that's coming up. So we're pretty pumped about that. So we will be represented in that, that's, you know, that's, those are my comments, so. Myra?
I just want to say, thank you so much for really presenting what we were looking for, the space. I'm very happy and very excited because we know we have long time looking for that. And I hope, you know, we can have soon the space so we can resolve some issues with our students being so without a space. So I'm very happy. Thank you to everybody who's putting their part of it. And I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody does and Chelsea. And I know it's, we are together, we can make so much difference, and we can make things happen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Neville? I want to take a moment to thank Malik for planning all the Eclipse parties. Thank you so much. And Dr. Altair, and I made a mess up here with coffee, so that's what all that commotion was. At this point, we'd like to, we'd like to close this section of the school committee meeting and move on to, we will convene to go into executive session.
I make the motion to go into executive session.
I second the motion.
We are in executive session. Good night, everyone. You may all go home.